I call to order the Board of Trustees' regular meeting for December 20, 2022, and the time is 6 o'clock. Trustee Johnson, would you like to give the implication?
Stand by. Thank you for this great township, and thank you for your citizens, and thank you for giving us a reason to celebrate this season. And I thank you to be with those who give us our freedoms to have this type of country that we have. Those men are overseas and missing their loved ones on Christmas Day, and you would be with them and hold them close.
Please join me with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, which is the majority of our citizens, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Ms. Varian.
Mr. Evans.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Ms. McKee.
Here.
I move to adopt the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, I'd like to move to amend the agenda to add under new business formally requesting the aggregator trouble to produce their current past fees received from our township's aggravation program per contract. They are limited to a specific fee, yet they refuse to provide what they've actually received in fees and what residents were charged. In my opinion, the only reason that they would do this if they did not abide by the contract or charging higher fees. Since these fees are tacked on rates at the supplier which the residents are charged, we have a duty to ensure trouble abided by the contract and residents were not overcharged and possibly do a refund. Additionally, I'd like to move to add setting the date for and asking other aggregators to present to the board for the open gas aggregation, upcoming electric aggregation term end on April 23, 2023, to allow proper time for proposals and discussion. We should not enter into any additional contract extension, let alone a five-year contract with trouble, as they requested when aggregation terms are typically two, three years.
Lack of second, we'll go ahead and call for the question.
Was a second called?
Lack of a second. Call for the question, Ms. Varian.
Well, there's discussion still.
There's no discussion.
There's dis... On the original motion.
Is there a discussion?
Yes.
Okay, you read what you had to say. Mr. Johnson, you have a discussion?
No.
I don't have a discussion.
All right. I don't understand why we can't get important items on this agenda. This aggregation item would take a minute, but formally requesting trouble to produce their fees. Again, we owe the fiduciary responsibility to our residents. I also like to ask, where are the updates on these agendas? For months, neither the Board nor residents have been updated. SCANEL impact on surrounding residents, Mink Street impacts, Mink lawsuit, union negotiations, anything on development, water and sewer, park, cemeteries, fire district, jets, jet Zs, records commission, zoning. Where are the minutes? They should be provided at the next meeting. Neither, again, this Board is, or residents are being updated. We haven't had any updates on union negotiations since they started, and all these items are pretty much under the control of one trustee. That is inappropriate. This township is being run like a sole proprietorship with one person in charge. This is a board of trustees, which are equal, and we should all have information and be able to provide input. And with that, we need to be updated, be provided information. I just found out today that the agenda material, our secretary would not provide it to me on the direction of the other two trustees. That is inappropriate. I should not have to sit here and, for the first time, see these materials when they're available to the other board members. We need to start working together for the benefit of the township and residents, and that includes proper agenda items.
Lack of second, we'll go ahead and call for the question.
Mr. Evans.
Mr. Evans.
We're voting on the original motion, correct?
We're voting on the original adopted agenda.
Okay.
Ms. Varian.
Mr. Evans.
No.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
I move to set limit of not more than one speech of three minutes length on the same question of the same day for each trustee. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Johnson?
No.
Mr. Evans?
Yes. I would like to move to strike the one-speech provision as it does not lend to a discussion rather than a statement. That was a motion.
Lack of second, call for the question.
Well, there's still continued discussion.
You have discussion, you have more discussion, Mr. Johnson.
I do have one point. I have no problem with limiting speech to three minutes because most items can be handled efficiently, especially if items are provided prior to the meeting, just like the past meeting that I had to call Bill Locher in the middle of the meeting because I wasn't able to do any follow-up on that, the items. Again, we need to work together, and making speeches and having things decided outside the meeting is not proper. We should have a full discussion in front of the public about what's going on in this township, and it's not happening.
Call for the questions, Varian.
Mr. Evans.
No.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. McKee.
Yes.
Public comments are limited to three minutes per person. Please come up to the podium, present your name and your address, please.
Hi, I'm John Dever, Aspen Energy.
I'm sorry, John?
John, yes, John, exactly. Very good. Yeah, John Dever, Aspen Energy, and just want to talk to you about aggregation program. I know you guys have been speaking before, and you are currently in one right now. Aspen Energy, we're actually located in Double Ohio, so we're local here. Number out since 2000, and we have about 50 aggregations in the state of Ohio. Aggregations have been a process that gives the residents an option choice to have a lower rate for electric and natural gas. I've been speaking with Mark for probably since April or March, it's been pretty early, but going back and forth and just giving him information, being very transparent. Other things he's asked for, I've provided references for him, or fees or certifications, and just updates in the market, currently what's happening in the market. ADP just had their auction done last month. Apparently, right now, ADP's at 7.3, seven cents, just over seven cents. They just had their auction take place, and it was in 45, excuse me, 45 percent, and it was just under 12 cents. So that was for June 2023, going to May 2024. So we're going to see huge hype up here soon. It's good to have aggregation in place because the rates that we can provide are not even close to that. But you're going to see huge race here come up soon, and also natural gas. I've provided the auction rate, the auction price, also proposal here, and also what's kind of going on in the market, what passes out at the end. But aggregation, it's about, you know, doing what's best for the residents and being in partnership with the township and providing any kind of necessary means that you guys support. We will be harder with you and hope we can in the future. So thank you for your time. Happy holidays.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Judy Kaufmeyer, 29, Roma Court. Since a report on the Citizens Advisory Committee is on tonight's old business agenda, I feel it necessary to address my comments at last week's CAC meeting. I actually called Mr. Leonard incompetent for his handling of the committee over the past seven months. As I expressed at the meeting, these are my personal views, and I stand by them. As a former teacher, I needed to have expectations, goals, and intended accomplishments in my lesson plans. When I prepared a lesson, it was intended to have a specific result for my students. What information did I want these students walking out the door with? If I couldn't explain exactly what I was trying to accomplish with the lesson, it would be a waste of precious time for my students and me. By the way, I wasn't always successful with these lessons, but I knew how to improve and rework it for the next time. After seven months, I'm still at a loss as to what Mr. Leonard is trying to accomplish. In June, I asked about the survey and when that would be presented to the public. This just seemed like a sensible putting the horse before the cart kind of issue for me. Ask the residents what they envision for Edna Township now and into the future, and try to adapt a plan that addresses those concerns as much as possible. I was summarily dismissed and told that the survey would be forthcoming in the next few months. My survey arrived yesterday, and if I hadn't been expecting it, I would have dismissed it as junk mail. The committee was asked for additions or corrections, and I suggested an open house to allow interested residents to come to the township hall, fill out the questionnaire, and ask questions. My suggestion didn't even elicit a remark from Mr. Leonard or Mr. Johnson. Last week, I asked how much response is expected considering the busy Christmas season we are in, and I was informed that we talked about that. Well, when it was discussed in November, I was under the impression that these surveys would be out by the end of November or the first part of December. Receiving the surveys middle to late December presents a whole new scenario to me. I hold this two-to-one vote to hire Mr. Leonard at $60,000 responsible for the situation. You hired a nice guy, not an effective and experienced group facilitator, and once again, Edna Township will pay the price, literally. Merry Christmas.
Any more public comments?
John Tenar, 10785, Almaroon. I didn't get a comment last week to our last meeting on the security system. Got some suggestions from my past experience. A security camera can be turned on during business hours and turned off. So you could have the camera come on at, when you guys leave at 6, 7 o'clock at night, and come off and, you know, turn off. That way, there's no video camera doing work during the day, because if there's a security problem, you guys are here. Also, you can set those things to send a call to someone if they detect motion after hours. That call should probably go to the sheriff's office that could be right here and check it out. It was very interesting to hear what the gentleman had to say last week about the report that they did investigating. I kind of forgot what I was going to say.
Time. Another guy that was here last week, for me the last meeting.
Oh, he made a comment that you can, I can record you, and you can record me, but you can't record this room without notice. And that's my question, and we've got a camera over my shoulder here, it's privately owned, that records everything in this room, and I don't think I've ever heard anybody say in this meeting that this is being recorded. For anybody that wants to know, we didn't even have a sign up that says this is being recorded, is what I took from his report that, you know, I don't know, maybe I misunderstood it, but him saying, "I can record you, you can record me, but you can't record a group without notification." I was going to bring my umbrella tonight so I could hold it up so the camera can't see me, but I forgot it, so maybe I'll bring it next time. But I still think this private camera needs to be addressed. Thank you. And merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
And it is announced that it is recording every time. There's another camera being recorded also.
Ryan Davis, 8807, Watkins Road. I want to speak tonight on the Edna's NCA for our new park over here. As a board member, I felt it's my duty to keep informing the board what's going on and inform the public what's going on or not going on with the NCA. I attended the county commissioners' meeting last Thursday. Alexis Fitzsimmons was there for Lickin County. The question was brought up specifically after some other comments from other parts of the county about Edna's NCA. She told, she told the committee or the commissioners that we still are waiting on SCANEL. As Mr. Vance alluded to in a previous email a couple months ago, this is the most important part or important thing going on in the township. With no updates happening at least once a month on anything like that, I feel it very important that this is the last meeting of the year, that this committee, this board, knows that they passed the normal date to collect taxes in a given year. Now the county auditor has to make an exception to even try to collect taxes for last year. So on top of the $57,000 that this attorney has billed the NCA, which the township has paid for because the NCA is not collecting money, to try to fight one developer who agreed to sign this NCA agreement to get this going? Why are we still paying attorney when this obligation needs to be upheld? We need to be communicating whatever we got to do and not with somebody charging $600 an hour to get this done? What if we lose on this tax revenue for this year due to this lack of purchasing? I mean, we don't even know, we don't have an update on where we're at with the land purchase over here. Signing the park land purchase with contingencies on the main section, the middle section of this park, it'll make two separate parks if this does not go through. And I'm not going to blame the people who sold it because we signed the paperwork. It should have been negotiated differently if we wanted something different. So with no updates from the board, the consultants, I think it's extremely important that we go to next year with the first meeting of the month, forgetting this next, this past year and all the issues we've had, and start next year, the first meeting of the month, with reports from our trustees on the different departments and from our consultant to explain everything that's been happening that has not been shared with us. It's extremely important. Thank you.
I agree.
Steve Sly, 1372, Londondale Parkway, New York. So I come tonight because of a text message that was sent to me by the president of the board on Monday, November 28 at 10:40 PM. This text message was not solicited, it was just sent to me. "I would be reaching out to your family. I know who your sister is and your father. I would like to have a conversation with them. I have someone putting me in touch with your father." That's one message, you know? I got others that are just like it. So again, an ignorant statement from an ignorant individual, that's all I can say on that. The other thing I'd like to say is, and you'll deny it, I guarantee you, but the conversation happened. June or July, you contacted me on my cell phone like you have before, and you were talking about, you know, Mr. Evans coming into the township hall after hours, and you guys didn't know who he was bringing in here with them, and, you know, that was the initial discussion that was being talked about with the security camera back then, that you guys wanted to see who was monitoring inside the building after hours about Mr. Evans was sitting here doing. So you're upset with him for the exact same thing that you wanted to do. It's ironic, but like I said, I know you're going to deny it, you know, that's fine, but, you know, any comment I said in one email, I have no problem paying for the polygraph whenever you want to set that up, and we can put those questions out there.
Any other public comments?
Gary Burkle, 3254, Trail East. I got three quick items here. First of all, I'd like, Mr. Singleton, I don't believe is here tonight, but I'd like to thank him because last week residents got to meet with him, and he was very helpful and informative in going over some things and updating us both on the SCANEL problem which we've had over there with development, and we looked at several documents, and then also on the Mink Street project as well. So I wanted to thank him. The second thing I wanted to talk about is that this is a 40-page punch list on SCNL of deficiencies and items that have not been addressed by SCNL. Now again, this has been well over a year. This was produced by the Lickin County Planning Commission, and they had the walkthrough back in November, and this is the 40-page report. Why we're paying a consultant $4,000 a month, and he gives us no updates, and we as residents come in for free and produce this document? So I'm going to ask that a copy of this be printed by the township and attached to the official limits. Second, third, it was stated under trustee comments at the last meeting that it was a lie or not truthful, that Edna Township had participated in framework process, which is the public-private partnership that several jurisdictions have entered into to have some kind of an overarching planning process and connect all the townships, not all of them in the county, but many of them here in Western County and the villages and the cities that will be impacted by Edna. The chairman of this board made that statement, and I'm here to confirm tonight that her statement was false.
That's not true.
We did.
That's not true.
This is my three minutes. This is my three minutes. We confirmed it with Mr. Leonard this last Wednesday at the Land Use Meeting. We asked him, did we participate in that? He said, no, you did not. He said if you had, you would have paid a fee, much like St. Alden's and Harrison Township paid. So if we did participate, produce the invoice, but I'm also going to submit tonight for the record, this was put out by Framework. This is a map that shows who participated and who didn't. Edna Township is not included, and the second page of this shows that those that have comprehensive plans in progress, and once again, that's in the green, and Edna Township's not included. So I'm submitting this as proof that Edna Township, you can put as many business cards on the desk that say Framework, we did not participate, and you called it a lie, and you did not tell the truth. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any more comments, public comments? Alicia Zachary, Cumberland Trails. I'd like to thank trustees, Rosalind McDee and Jeff Johnson for the Pike Street project. It's outstanding. You guys have that started, and there's money for it, and I think it would be a terrific attribute to this township. And I think that Mr. Vance also had a lot to do with that. Appreciate all the information of the things that you guys have accomplished so far despite the hostility provided by Mark. And I'm not clear why you didn't file a police report on a missing server that you claimed was stolen. Why did you have your buddy do it? Why didn't you do it? I don't understand that. I got a copy of the police report, knowing I would, and it's not a police report. It's a miscellaneous incident. Sounds like somebody demanded a report, and they gave them one. It never said it was stolen, but you go and tell people it's stolen. This is another example of what you're doing. Yeah, how come you didn't do it? Agent of this property, he is not. I am not. You are. You claim it's being stolen, yet you don't file a police report? There's a reason you're not doing that. Kick in and choose and get people to do what you want them to do. That's not a police report, sir, because it wasn't a theft, and it wasn't from stolen property. It was a miscellaneous incident, and you should have filed it if you thought it was stolen. Either way, it took you two days to put on YouTube a video that we all see all the time, and you had your little excerpts in there and explain what you did to justify all the video that you watched. I don't know, the cameras, not at 3:00 AM, no one broke in, you didn't get a burglar alarm, you're watching people, you've been doing it for a long time. I mean, I'm going to hold you accountable for it because that's what you've been doing. Thank you. Any more public comments tonight?
Hi. Ashley Payne, 75, Ashland, Pennsylvania.
Mike Allen, Lickin, Virginia. Thanks.
Is that her?
Yeah.
Okay. So I just wanted to say, I rewatched the August meeting, and in that meeting, there was discussion during the vote that stated that when the cameras were going to be installed, that they should be for security purposes in case an incident happened opening, and everybody agreed to that verbally. So I just wanted to point that out. I know some people don't see a difference between surveillance and security. I personally do. I don't surveil my home. I use it if I have a launch or an issue or concern. That's the only reason I would use my cameras at home. So like my kids' room, I'm going to use that for surveillance because then I can watch them, what they're doing while I'm parking in my office if I need to. It's two different things to me, but I know other people don't always see it that way. I just wanted to make it clear in that meeting, it's very specific that if an incident happened, that's when the cameras would be used, not to just watch. Another thing I just wanted to bring up is that you guys are not going to work together until everybody communicates together, and not just one way. When you bash people, when you attack people, when you threaten people's jobs, they're going to have a harder time working with you. Whether they're doing it on purpose or whether they're not, that's how that is. It's, it would be that way at my job, it would be that way at my room. Account managers I found hard to work with because of how they talk to people or about people, and I've had managers that are amazing because of how they can communicate and how they discuss things with you and with your peers, and I think that's a big issue. My manager would never go on Facebook and be like, "Ashley's horrible on your job." He would just come to me and say, "Hey, how do we fix this?" So I would just keep that in mind. I don't think that attacking people or yelling at people, especially in a public setting, is completely acceptable at all. And it really irritates me that it even happened. I think it should honestly be reprimanded, but I don't think that's going to happen. So I just wanted to point that out there.
Thank you. Any other public comments tonight? So move on to land of business. I move Resolution 2212, 2021, Julie, will be the next one?
Yes.
Okay, first one. Authorizing the president of the board to negotiate an amendment to the Refugee Road Maintenance Agreement as presented. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion? Mr. Evans, Mr. Johnson, do you have any discussions? Do you want a minute to three minutes, please?
This is the one-page, actually. This is what we're talking about?
You have to stop here.
Yeah.
There's a letter that came.
Yeah.
I'm sure I have the right one, right?
Yes.
So can you just quickly explain to me what the purpose of this is?
Currently, Edna Township is partnering with the TID and Pitasqua on refugee road improvements, transportation improvements from Mink to Edna Parkway. Historically, that represents the majority of an area that historically has been managed that historically has been maintained at the expense of Pataskla. And since Edna Township is partnering in the essentially complete restoration and improvement of that roadway, Edna Township has the opportunity to continue to work with Pataskla to revise the current maintenance agreement that has Edna Township paying for 100% of the maintenance costs from just a little past Edna Parkway all the way to 310. So what President McKee has initiated, leading up to her consideration on whether or not to support the $3.5 million investment, one of the items was to negotiate the revision of the existing road maintenance agreement so that Pataskla and Edna Township would share the maintenance costs of a section of roadway from Refugee Road just past Edna Parkway to 310, as opposed to Edna Township having to come up with $3.5 million, and then Edna Township have to pay still 100% of the cost from essentially Edna Parkway all the way to 310.
So this isn't necessarily, it just gives...
Authorization for you to negotiate with. There is no final document. That would come to us, correct?
Correct. This resolution would allow the president of the Board of Trustees for Edna Township to reflect that she has ideally majority support from the Board of Trustees as she enters into negotiations with the city administrator and mayor of Pataskla to bring back a road maintenance agreement that's going to be revised to bring Pataskla into financially covering costs, 50% of the costs associated with maintaining Refugee Road, the section that's not going to be improved with the current project going forward. And then that agreement as proposed would come back, and then the Board of Trustees would consider at that point in time whether or not you wanted to support its revision.
All right. Thank you. I have nothing else. Mr. Evans?
Yes, Mr. Vance was not correct about our portion of that road. It's not from Edna Parkway all the way to 310. Pataskla's got sections there. But I'm against this because any amendment to the agreement should come to the board. Pataskla's is going to go to their city council. We're... Everything is being pushed to one person in this township without, with a disregard for everybody else, and I think that's improper. Any agreement should be discussed and debated in front of the public, not in private, and just done. So I'm against this, that you can talk to them all you want and try to come up with something to bring it back to the board, but to just say you have sole power to negotiate and put it into effect without board action, I think is highly improper. What's the harm in bringing it back to the board for vote? That would be my...
I don't think that's what he said. I don't think that's what he said at all.
That's not what he said.
That's not what he said. He said it would come back.
It would come back to us, correct?
Duh.
And well, it says in here to negotiate the agreement. So it is coming back to the board.
Well, they're going to have to negotiate agreement to bring it back here for our approval. We could say no at that point, right?
Okay, that's fine.
That's what I understood. Am I understanding it wrong, or...?
You're correct. Okay. And I think that shows that this was sat on my podium right before I got in here. Why these aren't being... Well, I do know why these aren't being provided to me prior because our secretary said that she's being directed by the other two trustees not to. And that's inappropriate. This stuff should be provided to us so we can do our due diligence and make a decision instead of quickly having to try to flip through this and have three minutes to comment. It's totally inappropriate and not the way we should administer this document for the benefit of our residents.
Call for the vote?
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
I move Resolution 2212, 2002, requesting that the Licking County Transportation Improvement District commit to creating a long-term plan for the improvement of Refugee Road for the Edna Parkway East to State Route 310 as presented. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion, Mr. Johnson?
It looks like...
And that's the one with the letter from Mr. Commissioner Flowers.
Dated October 11th, and we're just now seeing it?
It looks like they asked for an agenda, a November 9th agenda for the board, that just get approved by the board, the Licking, or the...
Would you like a...
Who did it?
You guys.
President McKee, once again, approached the TID about what it would take for her to support the investment of $3.5 million into the Refugee Road transportation improvement project from Mink to Edna Parkway. Another one of her positions that she wanted clarification on was she wanted to make sure that the Licking County TID was going to place the improvement of Refugee Road from Edna Parkway all the way to 310 on some sort of formally recognized transportation plan for Licking County. She did not want the improvements to stop at Edna Parkway and have no sort of confirmation that the county TID was going to emphasize the importance of improving Refugee Road all the way to 310. So we sat down and we had discussions with the TID. Once again, we had discussions with our partners at Pataskla. The letter that you get from, the letter from Chairman Flowers, it's attached to the resolution, indicates an intent for the TID to continue to go in that direction. The purpose of this resolution is to get ideally majority support from this Board of Trustees that we can send back to the Licking County TID, which formally states, you know, it is the expectation of Edna Township that the improvements associated with Refugee Road in the future do not stop at Edna Parkway, that they go all the way to 310.
I would like to just say, these discussions have been going on since January. Mr. Lozier and I have been discussing that improvement, and I mean, it is necessary. But one of the things that I do think we have to take into account is per our JED, let us the JED agreements, the TID gets about 5% of those funds. And I think we have to proactively elect for those funds to be used for our projects. And why we're not doing that, or if we have done that, I don't think we have. But that money should be pushed to our projects. So I think discussion on infrastructure and that is a good thing. But I would say that, just as the residents mentioned, communication, these are pushed to one member of this board, and there is no updates, no communication, no sharing, no by her or her assistant or the consultant. So if you're going to take everything on, this board needs to be updated frequently or copied in on items because when I was president, the other trustees demanded to be copied on everything, and they were. And now no one is being copied on anything. So again, just seeing this tonight, I almost want to say table it because we should have time to look into this stuff. But if it's just about discussion, I have no problem with that. But please update the other.
Is there a cost associated with this that we know of yet?
Mrs. Marion, we'll talk about this as a board. Okay, you're fiscal officer.
I would like to know that.
They're discussing this, and this is in regard to... Again, I'm going to ask you again. You are a fiscal officer, okay? We are a board, and we are discussing this amongst the board, okay? We haven't got to the part where we're talking about the financing because this is a wish that we would like to have done as a project that we're partnering with Pataskla. Right now, it's from Mink Road to Edna Parkway. We're talking about something in the future, okay? So yeah, so you'll know.
Okay, I'd like to amend my comment and just ask, is there a cost to this as a member of the board?
Of course there will be a cost.
What is the prospect cost?
We don't know what the cost will be because we're talking about three or four, five years from now.
President McKee?
Thank you, sir.
I would just say that that response, you should have just given that response to a fiscal officer. She is due some responsibility.
Yeah, and you should, you're exactly right. She's a fiscal officer. She is not a board member. Okay, she's acted like that many times.
Call for the vote?
Mr. Evans?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Yes. I move Resolution 2212, 2003, amending Resolution 2203, 1502 in appropriating additional funds for legal services as presented. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second discussion, Mr. Johnson?
Am I correct? We did $10,000 to start with on this, cover the services initially.
Yes.
And now we're adding an additional $30,000 from unappropriated funds, correct?
That's correct.
Are there bills that we currently have received already or anticipate receiving?
I'll give it to you in December. Mr. Evans, any more comments?
No.
Mr. Evans?
Yes, I'm glad this is finally being addressed. I had tried to get this addressed before, and our consultant, Mr. Vance, said, "Ah, we, the board, can just approve and pay any bills they want." I did send a letter to our attorney regarding this because I was concerned that the chairman exceeded her spending authority by $31,000. It was limited to $10,000 starting in March 15, and we hit that in June, exceeded that in June. Brought this up numerous times, and it's just inappropriate. The board referred my expenditure of $2,400 under my monthly authority to the prosecutor, and they said, "Pay it." And the chairman has exceeded hers by $31,000. Now additionally, I had a concern that we were being overcharged. There were fees that were, hourly fees that were approved, and there were more. So I was glad to see that the firm went back, and there was a credit of $5,725. So thank you for looking into that. But again, Mr. Johnson, your question of are they due or... They've been, been due. These have been ongoing since throughout the year that have exceeded the authority. And that's one of the concerns I have, is one person dictating everything and having all the control and not doing what the board has resolved. So I don't know what additional legal bills there are now, but according to this, if we up it by 30, there's about $5,000 left from the last billing to now. And I think Mr. McKee has even solely preacted on things where I think most of the items, our prosecutor is our attorney for free. Most of the items should go to the prosecutor. Specialty things should go to brochures and grigs. The point of bringing in brochures and grigs was for economic development. And it's everything with the kitchen sink that the chairperson's going to them for, and I think it's inappropriate. It's fees that we don't have to be paying, and they're unauthorized fees. So this is after the fact. We're going to have an audit of a then and now. This could be a red flag. And we've got to start properly administrating this township, following the rules, following the law, and following our resolutions. Again, I brought this up in the past, and it was dismissed until I sent that letter to the attorneys, which I think professionally, they have that duty to address it, and now it's addressed. But it shouldn't take that.
Call for the question?
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee? Yes. I move to schedule a special meeting for a parliamentary training on... There's a couple dates. It's March, January 5th, which is a Thursday. January 10th is a Tuesday, and then the 12th, which is also a Thursday. It is a, it will be a special meeting. So is there a second? It will be training for everyone since people, you know, the residents would also be included in this training. So we have a couple of dates out there. Again, the 5th, which is a Thursday of January, the 10th, which is a Tuesday, and also the 12th, which is a Thursday. And it will start at 6:00, just like the rest of our meetings. And see if there's a second.
I'll hold it now.
Okay, so let's make a discussion right now, Mr. Johnson, please.
This is an open, this is an open training? For anybody that wants to come?
Anybody that wants to come. And we would do like a mock training. And this person that's going to do the training is very, very experienced in it. They teach it. They're willing to come in and take one of our old agendas. And you can set up like we are doing now as a board and we'll have the residents, and they would train us to learn the Robert's Rules.
Would it require all of us to appear?
Yes, sir.
Because I can appear the...
We need to...
The 12th I can't do because of...
Okay. Take that out.
Are we having discussion, or is there...
We're discussing. We're discussing, but Mr. Johnson has questions right now, Mr. Evans. He's discussing it.
All right. And so people could come and sit here, and we could... We will do like what?
Just like we're doing now.
We'll have a regular meeting? Is it a regular meeting it's going to be, or is it just going to be a meeting?
It's a special meeting. We would take one of our own agendas, and we would just do like a mock meeting.
Okay.
So questions would be asked.
But it's a meeting.
It's training. It's training, yeah.
Any other questions?
Mr. Evans?
Yes, isn't January 5 the joint meeting with the Water, the Water Sewer Board, Harrison, Pataskla, and all those?
That's not been officially announced yet.
That is being planned. You've been contacted, you're aware of it. It's moving forward according to Mark Van Buren and the police station. And so I think that's improper to try to plan it on a time when all our other partners within the Water District are trying to put together a meeting under the very important topic of district expansion and all that. There's a lot of concern, and there was a numerous entities that went to the commissioner's office too. So I think it's highly inappropriate for January 5th. But how much is this going to cost? And who is this person that's coming in?
Again, there's this person taught at a university. They're highly experienced, and they're not charging us a fee. They're not charging us a fee. All we need to do is know that if you're interested in coming to the training, because you're the first one to bring up Robert's Rule...
Or their organization.
You're the first one to bring up Robert's Rule. So we want to make sure that we get the training that we need, so...
That does not answer my question.
His name is Joe Smith. Yeah, that's a thing, Joe Smith.
With who?
He's not with anybody. He's a private citizen.
So we're having a private citizen?
He's a retired, yes, he's a retired professor at a university that wants to come in and help us with our meetings, and I think it's appropriate for him to come in.
So can you please share his contact information?
Sure, can you? Not a problem. Absolutely.
And it's not costing anything?
No, it's not costing a cent or anything.
Could it be more productive to have them come to our meeting? And as a parliamentarian would do to interject? And so we're actually doing something? Because I'm all for following Robert's Rules. I've been trying to get this board to do that for a while, and I understand that I have an issue on some of the items because we're all learning. However, the board didn't want to do a special meeting for the budget, but we're going to do a special meeting... However, the board didn't want to do a special meeting for the budget, but we're going to do a special meeting for this. I don't think it's appropriate.
Okay, so we went from the 5th. We can't, the 5th, we don't know for sure. We can have it on the 5th. Because the, uh, Water Board has not committed to that date at, at all, even though we did say we wanted to do the 5th, but they have not committed to that. And if they're not a part of the meeting, then the meeting will not happen. So we can go to the 10th. Mr. Johnson said he can't do the 12th, so we have the 10th.
The 10th is a special commission.
No, that meeting's not going to happen that day. Okay, so that meeting's not going to happen on the 10th.
So for canceling meetings, I think we should announce.
We're not voting. I have enough. Call for the question.
Mr. Evans?
What are we voting on? Just some date? Well, I know, but what date? I mean, I did. President Key, whenever appropriate.
Yes, sir.
I would recommend for consideration by the board trustees a motion to go forward with seeking to arrange a convenient date for a parliamentary training.
Which we're going to do in January. We came up with the 10th of, um, January. Mr. Johnson, are you okay with the 10th?
I believe so.
What about you, Mr. Evans?
I couldn't commit right now.
Okay. It's an evening at six o'clock. It's not like daytime.
This, this again would have been good information to share with the board prior to not even the meeting, but announcing.
Just, just, well, this, this is, we're going to get it on our agenda for this month. So if you can't do it on the 10th, that's fine with me. I don't have a problem with that.
When are, when are we doing the meeting with the prosecutor as a board?
President McKee.
We're not even talking about that.
Is that going to be in conflict with that?
This is an evening meeting, Mark. It's at six o'clock.
Okay, well, I don't know when the prosecutor's meeting to help us.
They're in the daytime. They're in the regular daytime. And I know that you responded that you couldn't do it till like January 19th, but that's not, that's not the question. We're discussing training right now.
Right, but I think that's more important than this, so make sure it doesn't conflict.
Let's, let's, um, we're going to move on to 10th, uh, parliamentary training on the 10th. Mrs. Barry, can you call for a question, please?
Mr. Evans?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes. Um, I just want to let you guys know I've been working with the Lincoln County Sheriff's Department Prosecutor's Office regarding the renewal of the public contract. And as of today, I've not received the contract back. So that was on the agenda. We were hoping that we would get the information back today. And we did not from the prosecutor's office. So that's why it was on agenda. I was making sure that we would at least try to move forward. So we are working on that contract and that contract is to expire December 31st, 2022. So we're hoping that we'll get that information here soon.
Is there a reason that we haven't gotten this done sooner?
You can talk, you can call Lieutenant, um, call the lieutenant.
He will not respond to me since he took over.
I, I didn't know that. I'm sorry. I didn't know, I don't know anything about that. I have no idea. Let's move on. I move to approve trustee Keys to administrate that township hall security cameras to replace with the state security at cost, but not exceed $11,200. Is there a second?
I'll second the discussion.
Discussion, Mr. Johnson, please.
Uh, look at this little bit. Looks like they're replacing the system we already have, correct?
Yes.
I think that I would not vote for anything that is in this room. It's inside the building. We're going to call security, need security outside. Um, I'm fine with that, but nothing in the building. Cause that's where the secure points are, our lock systems on our doors and so forth. Um, that's why you have security. I don't, I don't know that we need to have this in here. I don't know what the rule is about the way the cameras are, whether we need to have cameras that are only viewed from outside. But that's how I would, I would feel about it. And I'll submit, because I was the one that originally stated back when I first looked, these cameras had only four security in case something happened. We had a video record of it. And not turn in surveillance like we did turn in today. So that'll just fix that problem. So if it includes cameras in here, I'm going to be against it.
I, um, I agree. Um, we all have cameras on our phones. So if something goes on while we're here, we can use our phones. Because I was posted all over Channel 10 News because of a trustee that used the cameras as surveillance. And he only accessed the cameras in this area, none of the ones outside nor after hours. So I agree with Mr. Johnson that we should just continue with the ones outside the building and not the ones inside the building. We're here during the daytime, so, um, and that's when they would be in excess. So, um, I, I agree that we should not move forward with them inside the building. Mr. Evans?
Yes, uh, number one, the statements you made are false that, uh, cameras outside weren't viewed or whatever. Setting up the system, all cameras were viewed. I find it just astonishing that after spending nearly $10,000 months ago on a security system, you want to rip out the new security system and put in another security system for even more. That is wasteful that I, I've heard claims of IT professional, computer infrastructure specialists. I, Joe Blow would do this. If, if, you guys don't want what you are doing during the day to be video documented, not audio. There was no audio as many people claimed and called their attorney wanting federal wiretap charges done. That was false. But if you don't want people to see what goes on here because it is public records, you know, the simplest thing to do is remove the inside cameras and restore the system. Now, I just found out from the records receipt that I got, the system disappeared. I never said it was stolen, disappeared on the 22nd. The investigator took control of the 26th from Ms. McKee. So for four days at minimum, Ms. McKee had possession to that. And apparently there's something wrong with the system where the, the investigator, investigator cannot access other cameras except camera 11. So I don't know if it was corrupted or, uh, interfered with. Uh, but that DVR should, could be replaced. And if the majority of the board doesn't want cameras in here after they voted to put them in here and expect that cost, you just removed the inside cameras. Why are you spending nearly $12,000, $12,000 on another system months later? It makes no sense. It's, the new cameras aren't any different than the other cameras. So.
You sure?
What?
Oh, it's, oh, it's right. The app's always found, so.
No, no, I'm saying.
These cameras are. This won't be able to solve.
Go ahead. Oh, so that, that's what it's about. You want to limit access. And just like records, I, I request records from our attorney and they say, Ms. McKee says, no, you can't. You provided these records from us, these emails. Yes, Ms. McKee. That's inappropriate. You're trying to limit even more. Change in the lockbox code.
You blaming that on me too?
That, that's inappropriate. You're trying to, but again, this is all about money. You can do anything with security to height what you're doing, however, spend more money on the security system we just installed.
Call for the vote. Mrs. Barry, please.
Mr. Evans?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
No.
Ms. McKee?
Well, I'm going to say that I'm going to support this. Yes, because I don't, what? I'm supporting moving the cameras inside.
It says inside on these, so.
We don't want that.
So we, President McKee, whenever appropriate?
Yes, sir.
We could get the proposal revised and banned back.
I, I was just, I'm just making a point of order that Mr. Vance is not a member of the board yet. You silenced our fiscal officer.
No, because this, this, this proposal has the cameras inside, but we don't want it inside there. So we need to hear the proposal.
Right, but I thought, did, did she vote yes or did she vote no? She voted yes, but there were two no's.
Right.
So what do you have to do? Do you change your vote to no?
No, I want to make sure.
It failed, but you voted yes on the roll call.
Correct. That's right. Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure.
Under oath, since I'm trying to meet, you know, trustee Johnson regarding the comprehensive plan and citizens advisory committee?
Yes, at our comprehensive land use, uh, meeting we had last Wednesday, there was, uh, some statements made by a particular member, Judy Cathmire.
Yes, I said that.
Yeah, what? Yep, she said that up here. The, and she said it pretty much in the same tone that you heard up there. Um, it was not, uh, it was not to the betterment of the board that that was said, the way it was said. It was very critical of our contractor. It could have been said much different ways. Um, it ensued a discussion for 20 minutes of everybody's time that was there. Um, because of that inflammatory judgment that she put on that, how she felt. Um, and I don't feel that she's a positive person that we need on that particular land use committee anymore. And I'd make a motion that we remove her only from that position.
Wow. Make a discussion. Can we go to discussion?
Second.
Second, sorry, make a, a second discussion.
Yeah, I, I'll start it off. I cannot believe.
President McKee, whenever appropriate.
Wait, wait, you gonna say you gonna start it off?
Why can't I?
The chair has the record.
I'm adhering to Robert's Rules, okay? So I'll start it off.
I, I believe the one.
We're going to go into discussion and, um, we've gotten several complaints, um, about Mrs. Cathmire. Being, and I've gotten emails.
I've not heard anything.
Yeah, I've had several complaints and emails as well. Um, and, uh, you know, I, I don't think name calling is appropriate. It's very unprofessional. You always reference yourself as a school teacher. Well, you reference yourself as a school teacher, so you're a leader.
You have someone incompetent. You are describing.
Her actions.
Not the person you are describing.
I'm going to ask you, Mrs., let me finish speaking, please, as the board, please, thank you. I listened to you up there and I didn't interrupt you, so please let me have space. Yeah, right, this is mine, right?
I, okay.
So I, you know, I've had several complaints. I've had emails come in as well. And, um, we want a positive board and we want to do things positively here in, at the township.
Sure.
And if we are continually to disintegrate our contractors, um, for instance, you know, you went after Mr. Leonard. Um, our other trustee went after Mr. Vance here and some other residents did the same. Um, that's not how we should do business up here in, in, at the township. We should do business in a positive manner. Okay, I think the, the way things is flowing now, we just, there's certain ones that are attacking. And you continue to attack people and that's not how we do business here at the township. So I would actually, I would, um, agree that you should be removed off that board. Because we want people there are positive.
You know, there's a difference between having a discussion and even suggesting to someone that, um, perhaps that your format needs to be improved. And perhaps that's what, um, exactly what was being said. You know, I told you, I said, you know, when I was a, a teacher, I had to do things in a proper order. That, those meetings get out of control in the way that it's just mindless conversation that has nothing to do with a plan. So that's what I was addressing. And, you know, I don't mind, you know, freeing up a second, uh, Wednesday of the month. That's fine with me. You know, you're not, uh, but, you know, to say that asking questions and not agreeing with a facilitator is name calling? Boy, is that abusive. Power abusive, Ms. McKee.
Okay, so you're addressing me because you continue to address these. Mr. Johnson brought it up. Have you addressed him? Okay, see, a lot of this is personal.
You know, we have a member on the board that has addressed all of these things prior to.
You have to stop being personal.
It's not your Johnson area. It's not the way to work.
You can't personally attack people, but thank you. I appreciate it.
I'm not attacking. You can't be blind.
And President McKee, that's three minutes.
Okay, thank you.
You did. No, I did not. I said, incompetent. I did not attack anyone. I did not name call anyone.
You're, you're taking my.
President McKee, we've got to move on to the, we've got one trustee with three minutes.
I'm going to sort of make sure that I clarify.
And I will gratefully design, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you.
You have your wish. You said that last week there were people on the board that you did not hear about. And I knew exactly who you were talking about.
There is one more three minute opportunity.
Oh, yes, excuse me, sir. Um, I, I do want to clarify that in my motion that I was referring to, which we all know, Judy Cathmire. I did not name her.
No, you did not.
But I am now, I want to make sure I clarify my motion that.
I can read between the lines. I'm not blind.
But, um, there, the action is exactly like we're getting now.
No, it's.
That was, that was explained, actually, the same type of tone that you heard there, same type of tone you heard at the podium. Um, and it was just said out of the blue. And you must have learned and believed that it was going on like that. Um, there was no reason for it. There was no provoking of it. Um, just out of the blue, like I said. It was, it took 20 minutes of nothingness talk about the whole thing. There's other people chiming in about different things. So to say that it was a productive thing to say that is absolutely not true. It was very non-productive and very, um, uh, when you change the whole tone of the meeting, you know. So it was, it's very non-productive.
May I speak now?
I didn't even talk after that.
May I speak now?
That's your three minutes, Mr. Evans?
Thank you. I agree with Ms. Cathmire's concern. Mr. Leonard, when he originally proposed this, said he would take on one or two more clients. It far exceeded that and I've learned that he's actually acting as a pseudo administrator for St. Albans. He's not devoting the time to us that is required. I had to contact him multiple times after he put out the survey that mentioned Alexandria residents. The copy and pasting, not even providing the detail to give us our own survey. It was incorrect. We're not getting what we paid for. Do you realize that St. Albans, for the same product, and they're meeting two times a month, paid $20,000? We, we're paying three times as much as you guys agreed for this work. And I agree that the postcard, I would have tossed it. It's not even in color. It's the smallest size. I, I did mailings during my campaign and that was designed. We're not getting the service that we're paying for. We're not getting the attention, uh, or the progress to put. We're towards the end of it and now we're getting input. Or is that input going to be used or is it just, ah, we asked for it? So I do have questions about Mr. Leonard's progress in this and yours, Mr. Johnson. Uh, that's, I, I ran my campaign on following the comprehensive plan and that, while the prior board ignored it. And I, I think we're going down the route. I hear from members of the board that why show up? What's it matter? If the board's not going to adhere to it or if Leonard's not going to, there, there's no. Uh, even the meetings I've seen, it, it's not productive. Materials aren't really, there's no homework of, hey, research this. And so I wholeheartedly agree with Judy Cathmire. She's a valuable member of that board. And I think it was very inappropriate, disrespectful to not have an executive session out of public to discuss your concerns and not name a member that volunteered their time to serve our township. Shame on you, Mr. Johnson. Shame on you, Mr. Johnson, shame on you.
Call for the question.
Mr. Evans?
I don't, well, number one, I don't think my three minutes were up.
That's 27 seconds.
27 seconds.
And I want to thank you for your service, Ms. Cathmire, and those that are on the committee, continue to fight for what's right because this is important to the entire township. And whether the board wants to or not, I think everybody needs to fight for this. So, thank you, Ms. Cathmire, you're a great resident.
Call for the question.
Mr. Evans?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
That's shameful.
He voted, I resigned.
We're going to move over to the fiscal officer's report. I move to approve the check registry for the November as submitted by fiscal officer Julian Marion, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Johnson?
No.
Number three, Mr. Evans? Discussion?
No, except, well, except that it'd be nice to get back to electronic signature, some of these checks.
Roll call.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
I move resolution 22122004 to approve the purchase orders as presented, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Johnson?
No.
Mr. Evans?
I just see that the purchase orders are on there for brochures and grates and some of the other ones. I'm assuming most of the other legal fees have already had purchase orders or, do we have a blanket purchase order for legal?
Yeah, I did these because these were specifically related to such contact and.
Okay, and the brochures and grates, was that because there wasn't prior authorization and then now we have to do it for that, okay. All right.
Roll call.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
I move to ratify the payments of the above listed bills for December as shown on the payment listing, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Johnson?
No.
Mr. Evans?
Yes, I do have a question about, just like my concern with the attorney bill previously. Other attorneys, we have limits with them and I believe we've exceeded or will exceed those. Are those being addressed? And also regarding the attorney's fees for Ace Miller, I believe that this board, not this board, the prior board approved a set rate and that rate's now in the high 600s per hour. And I believe we maybe do another refund there too. So, I think, since you took it all over, I think it's imperative that we review these and have proper billings. The only other thing that, I did learn that, I don't know if it's still going on, but the chairman would review these and direct our fiscal officer to remove certain bills so we wouldn't see them and to approve, I think all bills should be submitted to the full board. If any bills are going to be removed, they should be removed in session and not by the chairman. Again, there shouldn't be any problem with removing things in the public. So, and then the only other thing I would see here is the bill for Booker Nekler. Our fiscal officer had the authority to have the legal advice just like I used the authority and the prosecutor confirmed that it needs to be paid. I actually received a letter to demand a payment from them. I don't want to see our township sour relations with various vendors and so that bill needs to be paid. And I know the chairperson said, I'm not paying it, but that was duly authorized at our organizational meeting, 2,500 a month. It is very much true.
That's not true, Mark, that's not true.
It is very much true.
He's got 53 seconds.
Yep. So, yeah, please. So, again, follow the rules, follow the law, we voted for it, so we have to abide by it. They're due that money, we need to pay it. And again, bills should not be removed from lists prior to the board's sale. Thank you.
Call for the question.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
Okay, I'm trying to meet you know fiscal officer Aaron to discuss the proposed 2023 budget.
If you all want to look at the legal size handout that I gave you before the meeting today. This is in the format that the county auditor requested we use. It has the estimated income at the top or the revenue that the township should receive that I am estimating to be 5.7 million for 2023. And then below that are general fund expenses by account number itemized out by account. You want to draw your attention to 1,110,131 for the township administrator position.
Where did I get the bottom dollars?
Yeah, no, I'm sorry, $220,000, that would be salary and benefits, that's been. I have added in my fiscal officer assistant with an estimate of 100,000 total salary and benefits. Let's see.
Where's that?
That's where it's underneath.
110,121.
Then there's just the regular. No, there's me and the others.
There's zero and 01.
It's right under her.
Okay, but the same number that you're asking.
It's just 01 at the very end.
01, there's 000 and 0001.
I'm sorry, thank you.
So then everything else just goes by insurance benefits, the usual unemployment, auditing services, UAFs, which are maybe marked up a slight bit from last year just to accommodate for addition.
About 10% or 15%?
It's not even that, with some of them that I know, but exact or even less because we didn't spend as much last year. I did act, I did put in 3,000 for fiscal office supplies. My computer at home doesn't like to turn off and then turn back on, so we have a discussion about something to do with that.
I know, which one is that?
Um, it's the top of page two, it's 1,110,410,001 fiscal office supplies, 3,000.
Fit from cloud.
Office supplies.
Fiscal office supplies.
So just.
There's 7,000 for regular office supplies and then there's fiscal office supplies, 3,000.
Is this UAN desk?
I'm sorry.
You UAN computer you're talking about?
I'm talking about the one from Walter that I took home, that's.
Oh, laptop that you took home?
The computer that I took home with the screen and everything from my home.
Is that the UAN computer though?
Yes.
It is UAN?
Yes.
We pay a fee for that?
I don't know, I don't, I can't remember when he renewed it.
Because I thought that all came as a package, didn't it?
It can, but I don't know when he renewed it, I have to find it out. So, this is just an estimate.
Fix that, I would think.
But it's also really old, so I don't know if it can.
We just got a new one, not, I think, I was thinking like last year even.
President.
We have a tiny laptop that's.
President, were they all purchased?
I don't know, there was boxes of players, I remember, sitting around.
Not printers.
Yeah, because all came in the same package. Okay, oh, go ahead.
This is just an estimate, I was trying to guess a lot of them.
President McKee, just a point of order real quick, is this, are we having a budget work session at this point in time?
We're just having a discussion.
Okay. You let me to put a motion for a time limit or anything?
No.
Okay, all right.
I also did pencil in fiscal office assistant supplies of 5,000 if we so choose to do that, or if we so choose to do that. What else is in here that's a little bit off?
These things you're telling us are lines that you added, so.
Yeah, I'm just kind of pointing out the things I think.
Thank you for doing that.
So, Julie, because, so we know what stuff was added, I mean, I can compare from a previous one, but you did it in a different format.
Yeah.
Can you do like an asterisk beside it when you just let us know, just so we don't?
This is actually copied and pasted from my five-year tab into the auditor spreadsheet because he wanted it.
Except you added those additional.
No, well, these were added to that five-year tab a couple of days ago, so.
Somewhere at my request, I understand somewhere at the chairman's request.
What else is there, let's see. I know that we need to discuss, or you need to discuss the improvement of sites. I have 615,000 in there and that's from last year, I believe that was related to the park. So, that's something that could be taken out possibly if we're not, if you're not ready to do anything with the park this year.
Well.
I know when I looked at that on the, last year when I initially did the budget, that was money that we had sent mostly over the garage or whatever, I think. And I just pushed it over into the park as like it, as a budget item basically, so.
I mean, we can take that out and reduce the expenses by 615,000 unless there's some planning that.
Yeah, in case we have to purchase some things or, I would keep it in there because we don't know.
Okay, I would keep it. There's also 400,000 for buildings, which I can't anticipate, but I also don't know about what you guys discussed.
Well, I know some, I've been asking for the security system ironically. At the garage to be upgraded since the beginning of the year, which desperately needs to be done to protect that properly. Why does not be done, but that can be included in that? And I did, I forwarded to the board, I'm sorry if I'm.
No, go for it.
Because right underneath that is the machinery, machinery, equipment and furniture. We need, our one truck is a 2005 International, which it's, you know, a lot of repairs in that and Bogo recommends that, you know, it's time for replacement. If we started the process now, we might get it operational in October. So I think we've got to move kind of quickly on that, that's a very large expense, 165 to 185. Also, I believe, what was it, the 2008 F-350, is it? So, I mean, it's a little bit cheaper and getting the four-wheel drive, it's only two-wheel right now. That, the pressure washer and numerous other items that I brought to the board and tried to bring to the Gen Z BIA. So a lot of these, we could probably, had a figure in there about 465. I mean, in the beginning of the year, most of the items to when I tried to present them again back in August, went up 10%. So they're going to go up again, I increased those amounts by 10% again. But the longer we wait to get these, the higher the cost is going to be. And I would anticipate that if these are allowed to be brought to the Gen Z BIA and the board for reimbursement, as we've done in the past, that about half of it probably could be reimbursed. So, I would hope these do not be blocked again and that we could recoup some of those funds.
I didn't say anything, but I should have said something, I was still on the office supplies and we need to look into purchasing a updated copier, not sure what the cost of those are. If we can get a proposal maybe on our next, to have it ready for our next meeting. I know that one still has a warranty, I think we're getting extended warranty on it, but.
She was talking about leasing, leasing option, not really.
Right, that's what you do.
Yeah, you either buy it or sell it.
Right, that's exactly right, lease them.
And I would suggest that we get one that collates and staples and, I mean, a proper copier.
So we can put that in the budget.
Well, I think, wouldn't that be in there already?
I don't have that in there.
We don't know what it is, so.
There is, in the general fund, there is a large amount for other, other expenses, which ends up transferring out to specific funds that we need like office supplies or certain things that are in our plan for.
Well, for leasing, we wouldn't have a very big outlay, it would just.
No.
So what, mind you on that, Julie?
We're at the very bottom of the second page.
Okay.
So that machinery and equipment is in there at 465, there's transfers out, which is 100,000 to 200,000. But that is to cover the 310 loan payment. So, basically I have the general fund expenses at 4,278,000, which is a little high. I have the gas tax fund in there, contracted services and operating supplies at 80. You got on the highways fund, that's the salaries of the road crew, the benefits, repairs and maintenance, electric. Just normal stuff. I do have, I think it's a little bit of a duplication, there's 500,000 for road crew department equipment there, which kind of ties into what Mark was talking about for some of the 465. So that could be adjusted if you like.
Was that in there previously? I thought, I thought I saw that.
I have 465 and I have 500. I didn't change it, I was copying and pasting.
465. Yeah, I think, I mean, that's duplicated, so I think we should.
Well, the 465 is a freight equipment and capital outlay and then the 500 is road crew department.
Yeah, that, I mean, that's very high for smaller towns and stuff like that, we don't. And if we're going to do it that way, I think, both the small tools and kind of equipment like that a year, what do you think we spend on replacement and stuff like that? I mean, tens of thousands?
Yeah.
I'd say reduce that to 50,000. I mean, this budget can be changed, it needs to change, so. I just think if we're going to comfort larger stuff, the other than the smaller stuff.
It's going to be 50,000.
Yeah.
Can, is it 465 or something?
The roads and bridge fund, it needs to be 50,000.
Go away.
On the capital outlay program, it's 465 of that shallow equipment over there.
Yeah.
And then 50,000 for just very small equipment, the parade walkers or.
Which is, you're saying it's all.
Which is on the third page, their highway fund.
I think we need to go higher on that because it's on, I have to do the transfer in general to highways.
Could you speak to a key question?
Oh, because it's a.
Sure, sorry. I think we need to go on 50, I think we need to do 100 because it becomes a pain to transfer.
Because of the highway funds and that.
So, you're talking about line 2031, 330790?
Yeah, I would think it would need to be 100, but that's up to you.
And just because we have 100 in there doesn't mean we spend, we still have to approve, at board approval to make those expenditures.
Okay.
So, okay, I'd say 100.
And then we're going to go down to debt service, 100,200 is there for the payment of the bond for 310 loan. And then, let's see. Contracted services, we have, I have 1,050,000 in there because if, for the 629 contracts, but if you get the, that's the expense for the forward.
We did.
We get the 1.4 in return. I don't know what percent, I could, I did 45%.
Is that still coming, that one again?
Well, we've got Schusterways, a million, we've got Global Parkway, which is, there's two parts of that, 300,000 with the 629 and the Ohio Department Grant, which is 100,000. The 100,000 one is the one that I've been speaking with Jeb Bries, with TPA, that we got that grant. There's no formal agreement like the other ones where we retain 5%, we pass it on. So, there's no agreement, technically we could just keep it, but the promise was that they were going to use 50,000 for landscape improvements around Ashley. And I think that's great, that they're going to try to beautify it and that. And Jeb Bries, I mean, this isn't certain, but he was saying he'd be fine with letting us keep 50,000 as a fee or donating it back, so, which was nice and I would use that for anything. or, or donating it back, so, uh, which was nice and I would use that for anything, but, um, so, you know, we'll get five percent of the other ones, uh, just like we completed the Global Parkway one. It was eight hundred thousand. We sent out the seven fifty and we kept fifty thousand for our mis-served legal and all that. We're not making money on it. I think with all the legal fees and that, it just kind of lets us break even. So basically, money comes in, money goes out.
You got the ten fifty you're saying, actually?
Actually, it's expensive. For the one point four million that you're projecting to come in? For the projects.
One point four really coming in, you're saying?
The grants, one point four, and then I had to account for the expenses that go on that end. But which, maybe a little low.
Also, we're gonna come out.
We should only have like seventy thousand that we're keeping, so it's probably a little bit more that will be put out.
So that'd be one point three million, if we're doing fourteen hundred.
One point three thirty, yeah, if we do five. If it's like the other ones, five percent, but Jeb Rees, you know, lets us.
I thought it was a higher percent.
I think it's five or six, uh, most of the six twenty-nines.
Okay, so I'll move that to one point three then.
Yeah, I do one point three.
So that takes total expenses to about, well, that takes. About the same because if we take the road crew department down to one hundred thousand and we put this up two hundred thousand.
That's two fifty, probably one fifty.
It's almost about break even with those two things.
Now, I'd say with the, I mean, the buildings and the site improvements, you've got over a million right there. So if we're not actually doing that, large projects to that, I, I think we'll be significantly better, so.
Is there any, we recently were contacted, we, we got on the list to be approved for Pike Street. Will that be coming up, expenses this year? Are there expenses on that?
Um, the Pike Street money, well, it's not available until twenty, which you can read out from now.
Twenty twenty-five, twenty-six.
Okay, so we would be doing anything with that at all? Like, do we have any surveys or anything like that?
We, I think we've already paid into that. I mean, prior, prior board, people said seven hundred thousand.
Four hundred and forty.
So, that's what I'm saying, we don't need to outbid money for that. We need to outbid money for the refugee road project at all? Will there be expenses this year on that? Have we done this year?
Not this year. Even if we took the loan, it's not due, and it's not due for the first full year or two.
What I'm saying, would there be expenses that we can pay this year and not in twenty twenty-three that we wouldn't?
Pay upfront.
Yeah, pay upfront, so we wouldn't have to take it on the, on the loan.
I, I'd, I'd still caution against taking, doing that because the Pike Street project, they're gonna, they only are given two point six million in the projects in twenty twenty-six. The cost went from four million to eight million. What's it gonna do at twenty-six? Let's just, want that, our portion of that is gonna be a very light portion. We're gonna need funds set aside to move forward, but they're, they're not gonna look at a zero bank balance, say, okay, go ahead. So I think it'd be premature if after all these refugees, it'd probably be pretty expensive for them to go from, uh, Etna in partnership with Petesco three-ten. So to, to spend out that money where you've got to have matching funds and I, I'd really caution against that. It's just a fiscal officer.
The question now is again, will we have, will there be expenses that you know of that would have, that would come that we, or the bond, that we turn over to the bond or that we could pay out this year? Do we know what that's.
Or the refugee road, okay. But because I know it's kind of tied back to what you're saying, trying to pay stuff upfront.
And I know they're gonna use that, they already have, there's money in their coffers, they're gonna use that for.
That's right.
And then anything else rolls over to a bond and we get half of it, they pay half of it. Right, so I guess, I guess what I'm asking is, is there money to anticipate that we have to spend or roll over the bond, but in this year, for twenty twenty-three?
Because I know our first payment is not even until, is it twenty twenty?
I would say twenty-five.
Yeah, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-five.
We can check that out.
So if we, so we're paying, so you're basically, you're trying to pay some of the interest off before the first payment.
No, I'm paying, I'm paying the bill that comes due instead of.
But it's not until twenty twenty-five, so you won't pay.
Okay, let's not get too.
What, what Jeb, what Jeb's saying is when the invoices come in and pay our portion, so it doesn't even hit the loan. Like, if the loan is kind of like a home equity, we'll draw dollars. And yes, there's gonna be significant amounts because the, if, if you looked at the, the construction, it's getting, there's a whole spreadsheet with this that I've been dealing with since the beginning of the year, um, that outlays the timeline and that. And there's gonna be significant expenses because I think the road's gonna be completed next year and the next year. So between this year and next year, you, you're gonna have.
End of twenty-four?
We're going in twenty-four, so twenty twenty-five is when.
So the end of twenty-four is when there is.
No, there weren't.
We started it now, but I'm saying it would be for twenty twenty-five would be our first payment.
He's not talking about payment.
Yeah.
He's talking about invoices coming in that we could pay instead of going out to that loan. So that's gonna be this year's significant amounts and next year's. I'm not sure about the completion, approval and then payment, so it might be kind of delayed a bit. But yeah, there, there's gonna be quite a bit probably coming in this year and we've got those spreadsheets. I don't know if you've copied. I'm not copied in that stuff anymore. I've requested to be, but I'm not. So Ms. McKee does have all that information.
Yeah, I think we should table that discussion, um, about the.
We could always amend it.
Loan payments and that.
He wants some questions answered because I know you wanna reach out.
I'm just saying, I wanna, I wanna wind out this because we need to put a line item in here if we're gonna appropriate some less for that. So that, that's on it.
Okay, so you wanna put something on there for net foot.
There's not gonna be anything on there. If I can see Pike Street, there's gonna be nothing on there, then don't put anything in there in the budget for it.
Right, right.
There's gonna be something for refugees to put in here.
Yeah, yeah.
But I think we should have another workshop. We should have an actual workshop to look at projections, especially with Amazon's abatement coming off. Amazon would get, it's coming down. It was one point two, now it's one point one. That, what happens if they leave? That, that's where we're getting a significant amount of money. And we've got to do these projections that they get through workshop and figure out what our plans are, what, what Pike Street, when that's coming in, refugee and all that, to look at the future, uh, and for different scenarios. So I, and then that allows us an opportunity to, to pay forward, but I, I think the board should make a decision on do we want to pay it off instead of, it's a cheap loan, three percent. Let it sit there, but.
It's one year ago.
Right, but at three percent, we're, we're not even, we had a zero percent on Orchard Glen and we just paid it. I don't understand why you wouldn't take three percent or zero percent, so. Maybe we need a, a financial advisor to come in or Julie can run some projections and provide some advice.
We just need to decide how we're spending the money here and, and.
Right.
I don't want, short us so that we're shortened, but I remember the days when we didn't have any money here. And you were down to the nickels and pennies on these, on these.
Well, we don't, just because we have it doesn't mean we have to spend it. We could set that aside for future payments. And then if something comes up.
My point is that we could get to that again someday as loans, the difference of us actually having to pay a pair of bills and not because we're still paying off all this interest.
Well, if you give away three and a half million dollars in the next two years, you're not gonna have enough to make payroll. Because you can't give all of our capital away for that and then still have any left over to carry over and pay our bills, so.
Well, but that's what we need to do.
It will be, it, it needs to be a conversation with a financial advisor, with an auditor.
I agree.
I cannot certify that to be done.
Yeah, I agree.
And two, all our funds don't come in on January first and that, so. Yeah.
I'm just saying, you have, you have money appropriated in here for it, really, so I guess we could use.
But appropriated versus having the cash are two different things.
Well, you say you've got a million dollars for roads in there.
But that means we have a million dollars right now to pay.
For it. I mean, we could pay with that, right?
We don't have, we have seven million expenses here. We don't have seven million in the bank account. We're gonna through the year do road money to.
Correct.
I, that's all I have to say. If you guys wanna discuss, I would, um, we need, the only thing I will say is we need to pass, if this, we need to pass something as an interim budget or a temporary budget tonight so that we can have operating funds for January first so that I can go ahead and purchase orders, so that payroll can be done and that kind of thing right at the beginning of January. I'm asking for an interim budget. That doesn't mean this is final.
Which is appropriate to have one.
I don't think y'all, we did it before in January, right?
That was, he had, he had an interim, an interim budget, yes. You have to do something.
So we'll just get it in January. I mean, because I wanna.
The way it works is.
Everything stops January.
Guys, I'll tell you how it works. Here's how it works. There's, you could do an interim, interim budget if you want, okay? Lawley did one last year for us because he was gonna leave, so he did an interim budget to pay for the first three months.
I thought you had to do a budget.
He did the interim budget. Okay, he did the interim budget for us. Normally, it's always been done. Every year you can ask Lawrence, it's been in our organizational meeting, we passed the budget. Bills are paid at first meeting.
That's what this is, is just gonna be an interim budget.
No, that's the budget for the year that we always pass. Now, if it's, we passed the budget on the first meeting in January.
I think that's, yeah, and I'll go back and look at minutes. Mr. Vance, you, did you have something to say?
In my investigation, I didn't see any interim budgets being adopted at the last meeting in December.
Yeah, there never were. We didn't.
Once I found, were discussed at the first meeting, passed at the second meeting in December.
No, we discussed them, made changes we thought to them, whatever, and then we had a final one ready. Like we're talking about tonight, when we had to finally had like this meeting now, we would say, okay, well, this is, and everybody, everybody do with that budget. And you're like, hey, while right after we passed it, January seventh, or January the sixth, or whatever the first meeting was.
Okay, well, the next meeting is January fourth and payroll hits the next day.
Right, and actually we had to pass it.
I can't do payroll that quick. It, it does not hit when I. It does not go in next day.
Definitely got to payroll week, Julie. Not for us. I think we get paid next Wednesday. We get paid in December and then we skip the first week of January to get paid the second week in January.
Well, you, you can't. But it has to pass at the second meeting in January.
Then we pass the first one.
We get paid twenty-eight and then we get paid again.
What about the HSA fund?
President McKee, the first meeting is January third, it appears.
Correct, thank you.
So, so I take it some members do not wanna pass interim budget tonight for what rea, delay for delay's sake is, is not good. This is why I call for a work session and, I mean, just because it's in the budget doesn't mean it's being spent. It still takes forward action. So to allow our fiscal officer to create those purchase orders to, because what you're gonna do is dump on January third, all the stuff on Julie and she's gonna have to scramble to get things paid to. Like, let, let's give her the courtesy of having a plan and I don't understand, there's nothing controversial in here. I, I think the administrator's a little high, but again, we don't have to approve that. You know, we had others that were willing to do it for a hundred thousand, several. So, but I, I think for the benefit of the township, we need to pass an interim budget tonight so we can move forward or our fiscal officer can start working.
Where is that one then? Do we have?
That's what this is.
That's what this is there?
She's been working with, this is a full budget.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
And that's, that's what.
I'm not approving, um, yeah, new stuff in it, I don't approve.
Okay, well, then everything stops January first.
Okay, that's fine. These threats have to stop.
The whole point of tonight.
It's not a threat. I'm just telling you.
We gotta stop. This is not our portion one.
Come January first until I have a budget and then I have to go through all the system requirements of putting it in. And I cannot pay anything without purchase orders that I would, I would create between now and then for just the basics of utilities and cell phones and everything else that happens in this township. It's not to pay a fiscal assistant or a township administrator yet. It's just for the basics.
And just because it's an interim budget doesn't mean we can't change it or not spend it.
Even a budget is an estimate at this point, an estimate until March.
I think our, we wanna move on.
Well, why don't we discuss what your objections are and handle it?
I'm done. I'm, I don't wanna, I don't wanna move on. I think we tabled it.
It's your duty as a trustee of this township.
Table it.
You're gonna table the budget.
Tell them that, tell, yeah, Mr..
You know, just so you know, then the health insurance that comes out the first, can't, we can't pay the health insurance then.
Okay.
I don't think you understand.
Yeah, I do.
How can we do it for years before that?
We didn't pass it February when Laura has the resolution already.
It's in our minutes.
We didn't do it in January, other than last year.
I won't have permanent numbers until after January thirty-first.
You can't do it until you have a certificate of estimated resources back from the County Budget Commission.
President McKee.
We already have that back.
Well, that's the tax.
Today is, today is December twentieth. I would say we just confirm that we could do it at the organizational meeting and if you confirm that is not possible and something significant and negative would happen between now and January third, you have the ability to call for an emergency meeting.
That's correct. That's correct. That's correct.
Why do we have to continue to lay the administration of this township? I would suggest that each member of this board and our consultant, look at Twinsburg up in Summit County, Ohio. They even have it on their website of the budget process. The chairperson and the consultant that's supposed to have all this experience should have been starting this back in July. I've seen lemonade stains on it.
Call for the question? What we all think, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm gonna table it.
You're gonna table it or you're calling for vote?
No, I'm gonna, I'm gonna table it until, if we have a special meeting, um, for the budget, then we'll have a special meeting.
Okay, can we always clarify those, wait, let's just clarify one thing. Okay, I can't do the first payroll because, let's just talk about this first.
Mr. McKee, our fiscal officer.
Please, I have to have, listen, I have to have a purchase order for the wages. If that's not approved, I can't do the purchase orders without a temporary budget. And if I can't do them until after that January third meeting, it's gonna be really tight because I have all the system and your health as well. And the health insurance is gonna pay without a budget. Okay, so there's no option at all to have a temporary budget.
Okay, we did it before coming in because when the last board left, we left with.
No, he left you with a temporary budget. Jeff said that.
But he did a.
He was here through January then.
Through January, so we were fine. So we're, we're fine.
In the past, there was also a lot of impropriety done, just like Ms. McKee's expenditure of thirty thousand over the resolution. We need to follow the law and we need to follow the RC. Our fiscal officer has been working with the auditor on this about proper procedures, about what, what needs to be done for the next one. And for you not, not to discuss what your objections are in public.
Okay, um, I'm gonna, like I said, I'm, I'm not, I need to look over this some more. I'm not ready to be on this.
So you're tableing it?
President McKee, whatever appropriate.
Sir.
We have time to confirm any, yes, yes ma'am.
Where are we at with the motion on this thing?
Is there a motion?
To discussion.
We're just in discussion, okay, thank you. Yeah, we're just in discussion, so.
Well, I, I move.
No.
So you need the motion tabled? Is that what we're asking or is this discussion, so it doesn't matter, so.
You're just tabling it?
We can table it and be prepared for the, do a special meeting if we have to or a work session.
You wouldn't do a work session before this now? Now you're.
Doesn't matter. Doesn't matter this year.
It does matter for, to allow our fiscal officer, you're, you're denying her an assistant to properly.
Oh, that word goes. Oh, okay, so that's what.
And you wanna throw this on there.
Okay.
What do you mean hmm? This is a discussion.
Okay.
Or should be. I'm sorry, Ms. Erin.
Should we just adopt, adopt the budget we had last year and then we can just change it?
This is an estimate based on last year. It's not installed. It's something that's going to constantly be changed. It's gonna be changed at the January third meeting.
I'm gonna move on to trustee comments, please.
Wait, so you tabled it on just your, your authority?
I'm tabling it. Is there a, is anybody else want a second to take? I'll make a motion.
Oh, now you're, now you're. I, I make, I move to, I just, I, I was, I moved to adopt the interim budget. To, I just, I, I was per, I moved to adopt the interim budget as presented.
This is why we need a voluntary trading because of this.
I've made a motion.
This is exactly why we're having the training, that you don't want to have.
I've, I've made a motion to adopt the interim budget as presented and changed through our discussion.
I'll take this, I'll second.
Thank you.
Call a question?
Discussion?
Oh, discussion, you called it a question, discussion, yeah.
Well, a discussion again, what I would like to point out is budgets can be changed, they're typically changed five, six times a year. So, anything in here can be changed, it takes forward action to actually spend it. So, i- if the numbers were 8 million for office supplies, we wouldn't have to spend it. So, I don't understand why we cannot give our fiscal officer the professional courtesy to be able to prepare to give her this authorization and then if you want to come in here and strip whatever, you can on January 4th.
I don't, I'm, I'm not supporting it, so I'm not going to hold for it.
I, I just don't understand, this, I, I did a work session with our fiscal officer since this board didn't want to. And most of these items are from our current budget. If you look side by side the past five years, this is the kind of information we went through. We did our due diligence, just to delay is not an option. We've done it so many times in this township. This is important. Health insurance is important, other bills are important. I'm, I'm done.
All right, you're done.
I'm, 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 I'm done.
I'll call a question then. Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
No.
Ms. McKee?
No. Okay, so we can move on to, um, trustee Collins, three minutes, two, three minutes, please, trustee Johnson.
Nothing.
I, I'm going to say that, um, I think it's appropriate for me to bring up framework, um, just to let you know that Mr. Vance and I had a call from them and we went and had a nice meeting. Now, we're back in, you know, is that September, Mr. Vance?
Couple months ago.
Couple months ago, so, and, um, they reassured us that we will be included in the, um, outcome, which Mr. Leonard will present the comprehensive plan when it's completed. They also ensured us that we would get the report, we will be included. They reached out to us because they wanted to, us to come in and have a conversation with. And they, they weren't concerned about what was going on up here at that, the good fight, the bad fight. So, that was a problem, my freight were, you know, kind of had a problem with us being a part of that. But we are now going to get the report, so we're not going to be left out. They reassured us that we asked them, they want the money to, for us to pay the fees that the other townships and the cities have paid. They said no, but they would make sure that we got the final report and that our comprehensive plan will be included in it. So, do you have anything else you want to say, Mr. Vance?
No.
Okay.
Isn't this trustee comments, not consultant?
No. That's, that's Mr. Evans for you. He operates, so.
Can I?
Okay, Mr. Evans, your turn.
Okay, regarding the framework, uh, it would be nice if the entire board was notified of their request to participate, not just one person making that decision not to participate.
I wonder why.
Again, bringing things to the full board, Mrs. McKee, that's rude. And, uh, again, uh, is this board going to participate in the prosecutor meeting that I, I requested? That they become involved because of the concerns of the improper actions of the board and what should be done and what, what shouldn't be done? It was, uh, stated that January 19th, are the other board members going to participate in, in that is my question because I think it is, uh, required because based on conversations with even our attorneys that there's a lot of impropriety going on. And, uh, regarding, um, the security system again, uh, I'm glad we're not moved forward with the total replacement. It, it's, we got to restore some common sense and as a resident said, communication, why things are being withheld. Our legal counsel is being told, do not share with Mark Evans, that the board voted to not share, we did not. So, I've had to resort to records requests and those records requests aren't even being complied with. Uh, it is improper, um, again, even areas of the township being locked away from a fellow trustee with equal oversight. What's happening is just sole control of the township and it's improper. We got rid of one person that was doing it last board, uh, it, it's not right. We need to start working for the benefit of the township and I am appalled that Judy Kepmeyer was removed from the comprehensive planning committee. She was a, a great member of that. And to, to do that again in public was just shameful. That should have been an executive session. I mean, it, it's not right. And the, the other thing, I'll add on a positive note, uh, I do believe in doing things for the community, even though that the township isn't willing to do anything, I personally am hosting a Santa visit here tomorrow, uh, Wednesday, the 21st, between 6:00 and 7:30. Uh, we'll have Mr. and Mrs. Claus who take pictures, talk to them, cookies, hot chocolate, warm chocolate, um, and, and stuff. So, I, I invite everybody to come out here for the kiddos, uh, just make it a good event because these are the kind of things that we need to start doing for the community. Things also like maybe Food Truck Friday, uh, movies at the park. Let's, let's focus back on the residents and just through development, activities, anything, bringing people together. I do this for my community and my neighborhood, so we should do it as a whole.
To adjourn.
We have to don't report on January 2nd, because I have no authority to pay them.
Our fiscal officer just indicated that there's no authority.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Ask Julie. Get Julie's thing.
Is there a second? Thank you, roll call.
Julie, so there's no, I don't have authority to pay employees.
This area, this area asked you, can we roll call? Roll call. Okay, you have disrespected me as a president at this board for a long time. I asked you to do the roll call. So, move it, let's.
I'm trying to get a little payment, looking at paying the employees on January 2nd or not.
I'm going to ask you.
Because right now I do not have the authority.
Mrs. Brown, could you do the roll call, please?
Mark Evans?
No.
Jack Johnson?
Yes.
Rosalind McKee?
Yes. Time is eight.
And as president, I did the role myself too.
Maria.
And to be clear, when you get that stuff.